It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, December 7th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. We have several amendments of the work session agenda tonight, but before I make those amendments of the work session, I wanted to start out by saying something quickly. You know, today is about more information and facts based on the requested criteria from Counselor Atencio and Counselor Graham. Originally, tonight was not supposed to be about hearing both sides or lobbying over one side or the other. That's for next Monday during the regular meeting. Today is about filling in the gaps of information based on the needs and requested information by the council for the members of this council. We will hear about the public's concerns, thoughts, opinions on this matter, but tonight, for the, not for the public, I want to set the agenda that tonight is, will be objective. Tonight will be respectful and nonpartisan. Councilwoman Graham requested more information specifically from the medical community about how this ordinance would affect their practices, given that none of us are doctors, which is why the OB-GYNs from Parkview are now listed on the agenda. Councilman Atencio wanted more information about the law, both at the federal level and at the state level, which is why I worked to get some type of attorney representation here, because we're not attorneys. And in full transparency, I wrote and I was in communication with the Attorney General's office to get the Attorney, our state Attorney General's office here during work session, and they denied because of fear of potential litigation with this ordinance, which is why our city attorney is here and State Representative Escar, who wrote the Reproductive Health Equity Act, is here to speak on that law. No, I wasn't done. I was waiting for Counselor Maestri to finish. These are the requests that I received from my fellow council members. I did, however, hear about a last-minute request through the mayor's office, not even to me directly, an hour before the agenda was posted yesterday. I was then intimidated, threatened with a lawsuit, and answered numerous calls and emails today clarifying misinformation about tonight. So tonight, we will be amending the agenda per our city attorney's legal advice. And I want to note that both sides, everyone here, will have the opportunity to speak during Monday's meeting, and I hope we can all remember that tonight is about objectivity and clarity in preparation for Monday's vote. With that, I'd like to amend the agenda to include our first presenter as Ms. Olivia Summers from from the American Center for Law and Justice. I will be giving her 10 minutes to speak. So she will be going first, followed by our own city attorney and Representative Escar to talk about the federal and state level laws as originally planned for 10 minutes. Then I will call on the Parkview OB-GYNs to conclude this work session for another 10 minutes. And I, I would ask that we're all going to be respectful tonight as we listen to all sides, though the original intent of this was not to do any type of partisan or sides. It was just about information and clarity. So with that, I'd like to turn it over for, I know Counselor Flores has some things.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention what a work session is. I mean, there is no action this evening, and I wanted to read this out of our council workbook. "Work sessions are held for the purpose of informal discussion and a study and to study issues outside of official meetings." This is not an official city council meeting. These are normally held every Monday evening beginning at 5:30. However, we may schedule, however, we may schedule other meetings as we are doing tonight on a Wednesday. "These sessions are not for decision-making, but rather to permit education and open-ended exploration of an issue. Decisions requiring formal motions may not be made at a work session, but direction may be given to the administrative staff. The work session chair, the work session chair is appointed by the council president. The agenda for the work session is organized and approved by the chairperson of the executive session through the city mayor's office." And that's important because there'll be no, the opportunity to hold a public hearing will be on the 12th, and anyone that wants to speak on behalf of this issue at the public hearing will be able to do so on Monday. Anybody that's opposed to this ordinance will have an opportunity to speak on Monday, December the 12th. And I just wanted to point that out, and thank you for allowing me to clarify that.
Other questions or comments before we move on? Counselor Maestri?
Yes, this is a great opportunity for the public to be, gain knowledge on the ordinance that has been set forward. And so I thank all of you for coming, those who are interested in knowing what this ordinance is about. And there are other council members that sit at this dais that also have the right to bring people forward, especially when they're being tagged with this being Counselor Maestri's ordinance. So I would, would have liked to have had legal experts here to explain that all to the public so that they're aware of, have full knowledge, full transparency of what this ordinance is about. Thank you.
For the record, I received no communication directly from Counselor Maestri about what she wanted on the agenda. I was told through the mayor's office, an hour before the agenda was posted, that these attorneys were scheduled. That's not up to practice. We, I, we have talked multiple times, Counselor Maestri and Counselor Winter, about other work sessions where we're in direct contact until it gets scheduled. And the fact that this, all of a sudden, what, you know, an hour before is inappropriate. So I will begin our agenda then, starting with Ms. Olivia Summers from the American Center for Law and Justice. I think she is here. Oh, perfect. So if you want to come to the podium, and then your mic will act, will be in front of you, if you want to press the button. Ms. Summers, whenever you're ready.
Is that working?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Olivia Summers, and I am senior counsel at the American Center for Law and Justice, or the ACLJ. We are a nonprofit law firm dedicated to the protection of First Amendment free speech and religious liberty exercises. I am here tonight because we represent three clients. We represent Tamara Axworthy, Mark Lee Dixon, and Pastor Quinn Breiberg. They were approached by one of the council members and asked to provide witnesses to provide education and information, legal expertise, to the council for the purpose of informing the council fully about the ordinance and how it would go into effect and work that way. So while I understand that there is some discussion as to the record and what the facts are, we have only received certain limited information, so we are operating off of that information, which is why we have provided a demand letter to the council. I believe all of you have a copy. We also have supporting affidavits that have been presented. So I'm not trying to be antagonizing or disrespectful. I'm simply here to speak to the facts as we have been given them. There may be some discussion as to what the facts are, and that's for further discovery. So please take my remarks as being respectful. As I stated, our clients were, were approached by Councilwoman Maestri to talk, to provide expert witnesses to talk about this ordinance and to further inform the council about the ordinance and how it would operate. So they provided a list of witnesses. They got them all lined up. They all had travel plans, and they were on their way to come when they were told this, just last evening, that they were not going to be able to speak. And there is some evidence in the record that that was because of their viewpoint, their specific viewpoint on the ordinance. This, I want to be clear that I'm not here tonight to make up for those witnesses that weren't able to be here tonight. So my time is specifically speaking to the fact that by inviting these speakers to come, there was a limited public forum that was created, even though it was mentioned that there was not a public forum for these types of meetings. There was a limited public forum that was created, and there are specific case law that deal with that. And when there's a viewpoint discrimination, these, these cases would go into, would apply. They are listed in our letter. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail because you have that, but you can see on page three of our letter, the discussion of the case law that's applicable to this situation. I want to point out specifically that the scrutiny, scrutiny that's imposed on viewpoint discrimination is pretty harsh. So we are putting you on notice that we believe there's a way to move forward from this situation without legal action, and that would be to set back the agenda, change the vote from Monday, and make another hearing available to the speakers that were not able to come tonight, provide them equal opportunity and equal time that's being given to the other speakers and expert witnesses that are here tonight. And that would allow for this situation to be made, amendments be made, and then postpone the vote and allow that vote to occur at a different time. The Constitution of the United States provides protections to religious viewpoints, free speech, and it's applicable to the state through the Fourteenth Amendment. So this is applicable to local governments, state governments, as much as it is to the federal government. The council's actions tonight to consider proposed ordinance and allowing some experts to come while not allowing other experts to come is silencing some ideological, moral, and religious debate that is very key to the purpose of this ordinance. There is no greater public interest than the protection of innocent human life. And that's what's at stake here with this ordinance, which is why it is extremely important for the city council to be educated. I agree with you that education and more information for city council members is extremely important, and that's why these expert witnesses should be allowed to come, as they have been requested to be here by one of the council members, the person who's behind this ordinance in the first place. And the ACLJ suggests that you take my recommendations into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. What questions are there from council? Counselor Flores?
I'm confused. You're not here to talk about the topic and the ordinance itself. You're here to talk about the letter that was sent to us this afternoon about 4 o'clock.
That is correct. I was not informed that I was going to be given 10 minutes to speak until a few minutes ago, so I am not prepared to speak on this ordinance. I'm not an expert on it. I'm merely here to point out that the experts on it have not been allowed to come. They have to travel, cancel their travel plans, and we're not able to come to make up the time that they lost.
Is it satisfactory that they would be able to come on the public hearing night, which is Monday, the 12th, when we actually take action on this ordinance? We, we allow anyone to speak. I mean, if we have to stay here till 3 o'clock in the morning on Monday, we'll stay here till 3 o'clock in the morning. Everyone will have the ability to speak, including your expert witnesses, just like everybody else. Wouldn't that be a satisfactory answer?
Are you going to plan a vote for that same evening?
Yes.
So I would say no, because there has not been given equal weight and time to this, the people that would present expert testimony here tonight, as there is going to be given to the witnesses that will be speaking tonight on the other side. You will not have the same time to take into consideration the, the statements that they're going to make, the, you might not have time to look into their information that they provide and dwell on that to weight it accordingly. If you give them time to speak tonight, you will still have much longer time to consider their statements than you would if you allow the other witnesses to speak Monday. But I would suggest that delaying that vote would much, be much more beneficial to you and would allow further time for consideration. Otherwise, you're not giving equal weight to the presentations that are presented to you on the expert side.
Just a point, you were not here at the, the last meeting that we had when it was on the consent agenda item, or were you?
No, I was not.
You were not. You should be aware that five city council members had no idea that that was, that we were going to have so many people talk about this topic. It was the first time that we found out about the ordinance. And so on that Monday, almost 90% of the time, the people did get to speak either under public forum or, or making other comments, was really by the ordinance, people that are behind this ordinance. So the, the opposition on Monday was very, very limited because nobody knew what was, what was occurring. So we almost feel like the other side got 90% of the time at our first, first hearing, our first look at it under the consent agenda that we pulled and we discussed. So I, I, you know, we'll have to discuss this later, but I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Winter?
Thank you very much. Also, during the meeting on Monday, those people would only have an opportunity to speak five minutes when the ordinance is being presented. So that's entirely different than giving a 20-minute presentation into detail.
Counselor Maestri?
Also note, that's public opinion, and we were looking for expert opinion. When I left the meeting, for the record, when I left the meeting on November 28th, the work session was scheduled for December 12th, prior to the, this December 12th regular meeting. I learned there's been no communication that the meeting had been changed to today. I've heard it for the first time this Monday evening, which left me to Tuesday to get everybody together in order to get them on the agenda. And I had Counselor Winter do that for me.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Well, one more. Counselor Winter?
Also, just for the record, I spoke to Counselor Martinez on Tuesday morning, asking if we could schedule this for Wednesday of the next week. And I got a note on Tuesday, the 29th, that said, "tentatively planned for December 7th." Then I checked with Tracy on the 30th, when she planned it on posting it, because Sarah had said that they would post it on Thursday or Friday. I sent an email to Tracy Sample, asking when she was going to post it. That was Monday at 11:00, and she said she'd be posting it, let's see, posting it by, by the end of the day. That was on Monday. So I guess what I'm getting at is that none of us ever really received an official, an official, I mean, I knew that we were having a meeting on Wednesday. I guess it was just kind of, none of us received an official email stating that there was a special work session on Wednesday. You know, not, it was just kind of me talking to you and just phone calls, really. And what, what you would need. I think if you were going to be officially doing that, there should have been some notice on what was on the agenda. It was my understanding that the work session would be from both sides. So I think we were all pretty shocked when we saw the agenda come out, and it was only one side. So I actually called Tracy Sample, asked her about the agenda, because I'd given her that information on what needed to go on the agenda. And she said that it could have been amended then, but she spoke to you and that you said that you needed to go with the agenda that you presented.
Counselor Maestri?
No, I was just.
Oh, sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, a few people remember on the 28th, I had asked for this work session, and we all agreed on that night that it would be tonight. So all this other rigmarole, yeah, we did. When did we agree to it on Wednesday night? Because I was gone four days out of them.
Can I speak?
Past seven. I'm talking.
Okay.
Have it afterwards.
Okay.
So I didn't, I was under the impression, when I left here last Monday, that it was going to be tonight. That's what I remember. I don't know about you guys. You can change, I mean, you can make whatever you want, but, because I had told you, because we had talked about it, about having a work session on Monday, this Monday, and I told you I probably wouldn't be back. I was in Phoenix over the weekend, and I probably wouldn't be back, so I couldn't do it. And we agreed that it would be tonight.
Counselor Graham?
I mean, regardless, what's here tonight and what's not, we're all adults, adults here, right? Can we all, can we all say that we're adults? And we can all go home and do our own, get our own information. I've received several hundred emails a day, several hundred calls a day, several hundred packets like this dropped at the restaurant, dropped here. And so we don't really even need a work session to make up our minds. I mean, we're all adults, and we should be able to make up our minds without expert witnesses and expert testimony, because we've been getting that for the last 10 days. So whether it's here tonight, or in an email, or a phone call, or in these lovely documents that have been prepared for us, I don't think that we need to sit up here and argue anymore about who said what and when it was posted. And we're here, so let's hear from the testimony we have. If we need more testimony, the council will decide. If not, we'll go home and do our own research and come back with the vote on Monday.
Counselor Winter?
Well, thank you for that scolding, Heather, but we were saying things for the record because she mentioned that, you know, there might be more to be said tonight about that. I also had a conversation with Dennis regarding the lack of the other side on the agenda. And he's, and you know, he, we, he and I talked for a while, and he said, "And how it trumps, how federal law trumps state law, I have no idea." And I said, "Well, I guess we won't know, because those people aren't going to be here."
To bring it back, I, again, received an email. I mean, Counselor Winter is the one who wanted to change it to December 7th. So we didn't have, we, we, we're going to do it December 12th, just to acknowledge. We're going to do it December 12th. Counselor Winter wanted to change it to December 7th. We corresponded with that. I was told about, from Ms. Sample on record, that she was going to post it. I don't have any control over that. I don't know, I don't, I don't have any control when she posts the agenda. I received an email at 2:39 yesterday that, to order John Mitchell and Mark Dixon to be a part of public speaker, a part of the public hearing. That was the first time that I heard about that. At 2:39, the, the work session was posted at 3:36 PM. Counselman Atencio and Counselor Graham are the two ones that asked for the work session. I've been in constant communication over the last, we've had nine days to plan this work session, nine days. Now, I want to move forward. If there's no other questions or comments for Ms. Summers, thank you so much for being here. Counselor Atencio? We're going to move on.
Yeah, my original ask was that I hear from both sides. I want to hear from both sides. I don't want to hear rhetoric. I don't want to hear any of that stuff. Because you're right, I've been getting hundreds of calls, and I've been getting hundreds of emails, but everybody's got an opinion, and everybody thinks that this ordinance says what they want it to say, and it doesn't say what 90% of the people out there think it says. So I want your experts to come here and tell me what it says. I want the person who drafted the ordinance to come here and tell me how and where and why did he get the information to draft the ordinance? And then I want the other side to tell me a dissenting opinion, if they have one. I want the truth. For instance, federal law imposes felony criminal liability on every person who ships or receives abortion pills or abortion-related paraphernalia in interstate, in interstate or foreign commerce. See, US, I assume that's the federal law. That's all I got on the federal law. I want somebody to come here and tell me what, to, to a person who doesn't know like myself, explain that federal law to me. Tell me what it says, where you got it, how you're, how it's enforced, and what we're going, how it applies to me and my decision. Not, I got about a couple more questions on, on the thing, but I'm not getting that. Do you want us to postpone this thing and do another one?
Yes.
Frankly, I'm fine with that, because I'm not getting what I want out of this one. You know? I, I, I need those answers. I can't make a decision until I get those answers. Okay? And I want somebody who actually knows the, the law. And I mean, I understand that our city attorney will give us an opinion, and I trust that opinion wholeheartedly, but you want to, you want to give your side, give me your side. And then I'll question that attorney as to where, how, when, why are you doing this? That's what I want to know.
And that's what we're requesting.
I'm fine with that. Because I, I don't care how long it takes, because I want, and, and in particular, I want the public to understand what this thing is. Because like I said, 90% of the emails and phone calls I've gotten, those people have no idea. "Oh, I don't want you to have this, and I don't want you to, I want you to have this, and I don't want you to have this." That's not what this ordinance is all about. And I didn't say anything to anybody, because I would still be there on the telephone with the first person to call me. I just said, "Thank you for calling." That's all I said to everybody. But frankly, you're the ones that need the information. I want somebody to come and tell me about these things. Guess what? I have a pretty good, darn good idea of what it says already, you know? I'm not as stupid as you think I am. If we postpone it, I'm fine with that. If we postpone the, the, the ordinance on final reading, that's fine, I'm fine with that. But we have to find out exactly what we're doing here, and we're not.
Okay, so then what I'm hearing then is, if you're wanting both sides in one work session, are we then just going to adjourn right now and reschedule that? Is that what you're requesting, Counselor Atencio?
Yes. Bring those people in.
Yeah, and the OB-GYNs.
And I don't mean the ideologues either. I want real, the, the attorneys that drafted this thing. I, I don't want ideologues on either side, okay? You know, because that's all we're getting, basically. You know?
Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Yeah, I think that maybe we can have a consensus either to move forward at this meeting, or we have a consensus to either stop, right? Stop the meeting entirely. So should we just figure that out right now? Because I vote to keep the meeting going as scheduled and keep that on the December's 12th meeting as scheduled.
Frankly, I agree with her in that these attorneys probably have a valid point and have occasion to sue, because we're not, we are limiting their ability to speak. I agree. I disagree. There's no need for that. There's no need to go that route. When they could come in, give them 20 minutes, they give their 20 minutes, shut, cut them down at the end of 20 minutes, give the other side 20 minutes, and then we find out what, and then we make a decision as to what goes on. Why can't we, why can't we have test, why can't we just finish this, and we'll, we'll put another work session together for part two, I guess? We've, you know, we've already, you know, we've got individuals already that we, you know, they're, they've been here for a while, and they, they shouldn't be allowed to speak.
I want to recognize also that we have OB-GYNs in the, in the audience. So what I'm, I'm wondering then is, let's continue this agenda as written, and then it sounds like we'll just reschedule a work session for the other side in the future.
Let me propose that we do the work session on Monday and continue the vote to the following city council meeting. Or vote on Monday night. We've done that before, too. Make a testimony in a work session and then vote.
You can only vote, you know, as, as Mr. Flores said, at official meetings.
Yeah.
So it's either December 12th or December 27th.
Add a courtesy to the OB-GYNs. Their testimony is separate from the legal testimony. So I think that if the second testimony comes in, it should all So I think that if the second, um, testimony comes in, it should all be legal. That way we have legal in front of us and we can see what the OB-GYNs have to say tonight. The doctors have to say tonight. Is that agreeable with you, Larry?
Say again. The OB-GYNs testify tonight.
Tonight.
And then do the legal part.
And do the both legal at the same time.
Fine with me.
And Counselor Mastry, just to clarify, are you saying both on then Monday at the same time?
Legal, yes.
For both legal.
Yes.
Does the other side want to talk about OB-GYN issues?
We do have one. Well, that's, yeah, that'll, I think that'll be lumped in though with the testimony. Is that what I'm hearing, Counselor Mastry?
It would be an OB-GYN testimony, not legal.
I'm sick.
I'll, I'll go with that.
I, um, so why don't we let me make a suggestion?
For those in the audience, yeah.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Okay. Ms. Escar is ready to go. I'm ready to go. The OB gins are ready to go. Let's allow us to, to, um, answer questions that you have. And then on, on the 12th at 5:30, we'll have the response um, from, um, from the other side. And then you, you can decide on the 12th whether you want to vote that night or continue it. I don't think you have to continue, to be honest. You, you, you'll have input tonight and then they've asked for their own input. You'll have that before the vote. And then I suggest you vote on the 12th and, and we can move on.
I actually agree with Counselor Mastry. I, I would like to have them both, or Counselor Attencio, whoever said it, them both in, in one lump sum.
Sure.
So I would appreciate then, if I appreciate your time, Ms. Summers, it sounds like we're going to hear both of the legal legalities next Monday at one time. We're going to continue with our friends from Parkview though, who will present an OB-GYN's perspective.
And then are we good to go?
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, Ms. Lynn.
Excuse me. Um, the work session schedule for December 12th is, um, full and ready to go. Um, so with your direction, we will modify it accordingly from the mayor's office, but I'd like to know the amount of time that we will modify, who's ever already on the agenda, we will call and ask to be, um, rescheduled at a later date.
Are we good with 10 minutes each? 10 minutes per side?
Whatever you tell me.
I, okay, it sounds like this takes precedence in any case. I wish that's, I was, I great. It's okay. Counselor Warner?
I think you need 20 minutes on each side, just like they have. I mean, just like normally you would have. When you, when you have a presenter, you give them 20 minutes. So it should be 20 on each side.
Yeah. 20 minutes is fine. Um, and we'll, we, we will then just boot the people on Monday. I think it's Black Hills and we've booted Black Hills now for like five times, but we're just going to keep on booting them because it sounds like this takes precedence.
Thank you.
Okay. We good? Um, OB-GYN friends. So, um, moving forward on the agenda, um, our OB-GYN specialists, again, as requested by Counselor Graham.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council and Mayor Grisar, my name is Mike Groundy. I'm an OB-GYN, currently Chief of Staff at Parkview, which is right now the only hospital on town with women's services. Uh, I'm here with the majority of our, uh, OB-GYN providers, uh, and together can bring a combined total of more than 140 years of, uh, women's health experience. And that does not include college and med school. Together, we represent the vast majority of board-certified and duly licensed OB-GYNs practicing in your community in Pueblo. We come together from a variety of cultural, ethnic, and certainly political backgrounds. I'm sure Dr. Castelli and I have never voted the same way in our lives. Some of us recognize different religions and come to God. Yeah. We come to God by a different pathway and even call him by a different name. We're quite varieties as far as citizens goes, literally from around the world. Most of us practice obstetrics as well as gynecology, and thus our financial motive is obviously live babies. That's how we make our living. We have no financial conflict of interest regarding abortion. Other than that, we're sitting here technically as competing office groups, goes my competitor. None of us provide elective terminations of pregnancy on demand in our practices. But we come together every day, all day, to work for the betterment of women in our community. All of us will provide emergency care for women who have sought an abortion out of town, uh, and have any complications. All of us will take call, wake up, leave our families in their warm beds to deal with emergencies and threats to life, to fertility, and to make sure that babies enter this world in the safest way that we can, and to provide safety and care for our expectant moms. All of us have experience with receiving referrals from a caring pregnancy center, pregnancy crisis centers here in town. But all of us will refer out of town as appropriate for safe, legal abortion if they, if it's so demanded. We are all middle of the road, level-headed, well-educated, and incredibly well-trained members of the same team. I can speak for the groups, the general medical staff at Parkview, and the hospital in opposition of this overly vague measure facing city council. The ordinance you're considering would impede our efforts to provide comprehensive medical care to women and detract from our ability to routinely provide life-saving services for your wives, your sisters, your moms, and yourself, even without elective terminations of pregnancy. This proposed ordinance was written, looks like out of town and touted by somebody from Texas, who apparently has never bothered to ask a gynecologist about our tools of the trade. What do we use every day in the office? We already struggle with some pharmacists who won't fill prescriptions for common stomach ulcer medicine called misoprostal that we use to help reduce postpartum hemorrhage after deliveries or to empty the uterus after miscarriages so women can avoid the risks and scary experiences of the operating room and the risks of surgical DNC for pregnancy loss. Pharmacists refuse it because it might be used for an abortion. We have data from randomized controlled trials to support the use of a medicine called Mifepristone or Mifeprax, you might know it as RU486, so the abortion pill. We use it for miscarriages that are already dead. Our data say that if you use it in combination with misoprostal, your success rates at avoiding surgical intervention for that miscarriage is lower. We use a manual vacuum aspirator, which is a suction device, to help ease the suffering of couples experiencing an early pregnancy loss to avoid the risks of general anesthesia and surgery. This device, utilized elsewhere in the world, was designed and used primarily for voluntary interruption of pregnancy or abortion, but not here and not with us. It has been adapted by us to use it for good medical care in your community. This week, we will all use a curette, which is a small scraper that goes into the uterus to sample the lining of the uterus to tell us if your mom or your wife or your grandma has endometrial cancer. It can be adapted to perform an abortion. This ordinance is written in such a way that none of these items, medicines, or devices or tools could be mailed or shipped to our office or our hospitals. Section 792A1, any article or thing designed, adapted, or intended for abortion, uh, producing an abortion. I can't get it. Can't get supplies. Everything we use to, uh, treat ectopic pregnancies, miscarriages, diagnose endometrial cancers, it can all be adapted to perform abortions. Half the stuff we use was adapted for clinical practice from people that do abortions. It's hand-in-hand, tools of the trade. It's the same equipment. It's the same medication. We just use it in different ways, not performing terminations. But this ordinance would make it so we can't get it. The mailroom clerk who opens the box, the ordering clerk who pushes send on the computer, because this ordinance talks about computer ordering, we can't order, we can't ship, we can't receive medicines that we need to save your citizens. $100,000 apiece. So what are we missing? Well, all these things can be adapted. The proposal, um, is missing common sense. There is a carve-out in the proposal for ectopic pregnancies. There's carve-out for spontaneous abortion. But how do you get the equipment to use it? And this is just the first half of the, of the ordinance. It's not even addressing abortion clinic. I didn't even get into that part because we work in the hospital. We're excluded. But we can't ship the supplies that we need. I'm low on time. I'm going to yield to Dr. Castelli.
I, I had, I had a, a longer statement prepared as well, so I just wanted to hit a few highlights. I, I agree with everything Mike says here. It's, it's, these are the tools that we need to provide just routine obstetrical care. Um, I had, uh, I have a patient that, um, had to be induced, uh, for severe preclampsia. She's pregnant. She's 32 weeks this week. I used misoprostal to do that. It's the clinically, the quickest way to make it happen. Well, let's imagine that I don't have misoprostal and she has a 48-hour, 72-hour labor. And then she ends up with a C-section because I didn't have the right equipment, the right drugs. And then she ends up with an infection because of the fact that I didn't have the right drugs to begin with, and then I had to do a C-section that she probably could have avoided, and then she got an infection. And now she's on antibiotics and in the hospital three or four more days. Now, in this case, this woman's going to be okay, you know? She may be in the hospital 10 days. Is that a really good use of resources? And are we doing harm to this woman? And I, my argument would be, you know, by not having the proper medical equipment, the standard of care, standard of care, we are doing harm to our patients. And this ordinance makes it that way. Um, I also would like to remind counsel that when we make this decision for the city, that includes our hospital, Parkview. It also includes every life that Parkview serves in Southern Colorado and Northern New Mexico. So as, as we are making this decision on this, keep in mind that you're not just making a decision for the folks that live here in your jurisdiction. You're actually making a decision for hundreds of thousands of lives from Alamosa to Trinidad, Raton, Lamar. I think I've delivered half the babies in Ordway in the last 10 years. So I just want you to understand that this decision is affecting a vast swath of Southern Colorado and lowering our ability to deliver the standard of care. We will not be doing state-of-the-art medicine if this happens. Lastly, I, I want to, again, back to the harm thing. I mean, without the proper, uh, instruments, suction curets that were originally for abortions, but we use them every day for, for missed abortions, and we can get into a whole educational thing about that, and that's kind of what I was prepared to, to talk about tonight, but we don't have enough time. But if I don't have the proper equipment, people will, will lose blood. People will have to have a hysterectomy because I don't have the right equipment to, to evacuate the uterus the way I, I should be able to. People will lose their fertility. People could lose their lives. So we're not, we're not playing with, you know, this is not a fun game. There's a lot on the line here. I'm not, I mean, I've been in practice for 20 years and I, I might be an expert. Uh, I don't, I mean, some people might say I'm an expert. I might look at my gray-haired guys that, that taught me what I do, and I, I think they're the expert. But I think that none of us can really think of every clinical scenario that's going to come to pass if we lose access to just the basics, just the basics. When most of us graduate from medical school, at least it's the way it was at my medical school, we, at the end of the ceremony, we, uh, recite together the Hippocratic Oath. And really, the most important part of the Hippocratic Oath is first, do no harm. I fear that the proposed ordinance will do exactly that. And, you know, I guess that's where I'm going to leave my statement.
Our team showed up. We have an incredible showing tonight. Thank you, ladies. Um, we're taking care of your neighbors, your friends, your sisters, yourselves. Uh, and we need to be able to do that. We need to be able to supply and purchase. We're not doing abortions. The way this ordinance is written, we can't click and ship anything that we need to take care of the women in our community. Uh, thank you for your time. I know we ran over, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, um, for that. What questions are there from counsel? Counselor Mastry?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. I'm going to ask you some questions. They're not to be um, accusatory or anything, but I, we need clarification from your statements. Um, is anyone in your group of doctors? Um, do they all, do all, everyone from your group of doctors live in, within the city limits of Pueblo?
All but one, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And this ordinance has passed in 60 cities in the United States. Have you looked into what those, what those medical facilities, such as hospitals and so forth? Um, have you heard anything or that they're not able to practice medicine within those hospitals in those communities?
I have no answer on that. I, I don't know. Um, I know how this is written for what it looks like for Pueblo.
And I'm just going to ask you this. Do either one of you possess a law license, a license to practice law?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Did you, um, speak with an attorney? Or do you have a legal representation that interpreted this ordinance to you as you're stating it at here tonight?
Our co-pick is our malpractice carrier. They're currently reviewing it. I have not heard back from them. Um, black and white words on paper don't really need much of an attorney. It's right there on paper.
That's not necessarily true. Um, but
What way?
Okay, and then so I'm going to ask you another question. Um, have, does anyone in your, at Parkview in the OB-GYN department, has any of them practiced abortion in the past? Do they know about the practice of abortion, the procedures of abortion?
So it's, it's basically abortion is a complicated topic because when you talk about abortion, you're talking about an elective abortion. That's
Yes.
Okay. So when, when we talk about abortion, it, it takes on a whole, it, it is pregnancy loss at the very top. Elective abortion is a small, a small part of that. But, but let me just explain. When, when a woman has a missed abortion, uh, in other words, she, the, she loses the embryo or the fetus, the heartbeat's gone. The procedure that we do for that is the exact same procedure that is done in 90% of, um, abortions in the nation. So, so if you ask, do I understand abortion? And what it is and what it does, and did I receive education on that? Then the answer is clearly yes. Now, do I have to have performed a first trimester abortion myself in order to understand the procedure and what's going on there? I don't think I have to do that. And if you ask me that, if you're, if you're saying that in order for me to be an expert, I must have had to have done an abortion to understand the significance of it, I, I beg to differ, ma'am.
I'm sorry, sir, that you, um, are misunderstanding my questions and that you're misunderstanding my questions because I didn't ask you those questions that you just came back at me with. I was just asking you a direct question. Like, again, once, I just would like some clarification. The other thing I'd like to ask you, um, is that who asked you to come to speak at city council meeting tonight?
I was asked by Leslie Barnes, our CEO.
Okay, and, um, also
Counselor Mastry, I want to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to speak, so I'll loop back.
Uh, no, ma'am, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to ask the question. Have you ever treated at Parkview Hospital a woman who suffers from complications from receiving an abortion in an abortion clinic?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What would you say, how many women have you treated in your time at Parkview?
Impossible to say.
Okay. And, um, would you, are you aware that we do not have any regulation when it comes to, I mean, very minimal regulation when it comes to abortion, the legal? um, abortion, the legalization of abortion in the state of Colorado? Are you aware of what the regulations are, how limited they are? Because I, I looked them up and I see that you don't have to be a licensed physician to be an abortionist. You just have to be under a licensed physician to perform abortion. Are you aware of that?
I did notice that as I was, uh, reviewing the, um, representative
Yeah.
Uh, the new laws.
I think one of the concerns for myself and why I brought this abort, uh, this ordinance forward is because we have put legalization of abortion in place, and yet we don't have anything that regulates abortion clinics. And my concern with bringing this particular, the owner of this particular abortion clinic in is that he has a pretty large history of malpractice. And we're concerned all, you know, we are also concerned about the safety of women in this community.
Uh, can I respond to that?
And, and I just want to say one other thing. You said it could be assumed to be a tool used for abortion. And so I think that, um, if we're gonna discuss it, we should discuss what that ordinance means legally. And, and how we're gonna, we, we need to, as a community, we need to come together. Obviously, we don't, you know, Parkview is far from the clinic. If there are complications, they have to take a hos, uh, an ambulance to the hot, um, to Parkview, the Parkview facility. And, um, you know, we're just concerned about the safety of women when it comes to this particular.
This is not the way to do it.
Well, you know, um,
You're, you're jeopardizing, uh, by taking the tools out of the hands.
Well, you're, you're stating that those tools are the tools that are referred to in this ordinance, and I think we need that clarified.
So I, I, I guess I don't understand that point. What exactly do you mean? The tools that are used for an elective abortion are exactly the same tools we use every single day, every day.
It passed in sixty.
The fact that it passed elsewhere doesn't make it right, right to pass here, ma'am.
Well, you don't, you don't know that because if you don't know the law behind it, and maybe it stands up for those who are practicing in the hospitals. And so, see, you're, you're trying to
There's no exception in here about if you work at Parkview, you can get the tools. It doesn't say that anywhere in here.
I'm not an attorney, and you're not an attorney.
Counselor Mastry, do you have a degree in medicine?
I am not an attorney, and they're not an attorney, and we're talking about the law in the ordinance.
Okay, we're getting out of order and out of line.
They said it themselves.
Counselor Mastry.
Assumed as a tool.
Counselor Mastry. I, I'd want respect in these chambers. So are those all of the questions, Counselor Mastry? Because I want to make sure that all of the other counselors that have questions, does anyone else have questions? Counselor Graham.
I just want to thank you guys for coming tonight. Um, I requested that you be here so that we can get the facts from the people that actually, um, use the tools. And before this council goes and limits the tools that you and your providers and the rest of providers in the city need that aren't here tonight, I just want to make sure that we have all the facts. And so thank you so much for coming tonight, giving us a very, um, layman's terms on understanding, um, what you need and what you will need in the future to potentially save lives in Pueblo. Thanks.
Thank you for the invitation.
Counselor Tencio.
Yeah, I, I know you're not an abortion clinic, but, uh, this ordinance does call for licensure of abortion clinics. What kind of licenses does Parkview have in terms of legal type like licenses? And would Parkview have to have a license to a, a city license? And this is just a city license.
I, 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 you know, as she pointed out, I'm not a lawyer. So I think that is a legal question. I don't know what licenses Parkview would have to have to continue to operate for those emergency types of situations. You know, uh, that, that's the only answer I can give you. Yeah, so that, again, that may, would be a, a question maybe for Parkview's lawyer. I, I, I mean, I think Mike and I didn't come here expecting to talk about the abortion clinic. I know that's what's underlying all this. I think Mike and I came to, uh, point out, and all of us, I'm sorry, yeah, all of us came here to, to point out that the way that this law appears to be written is scares us. It scares us in terms of what, what it could turn into. It will put a, a kind of a shadow on Pueblo. We'll have trouble recruiting doctors that do OB GYN because of the lack of just being able to do our job with the tools that we need to do our job with.
Would we be in danger of losing you if there were a hundred dollar, hundred thousand dollar bounty on your head every other week?
That's a pretty good sized bounty. Uh, that's a, that's a minimum bounty, sir. The way this is written, it is no less than one hundred thousand dollars. And as of this afternoon, I had not yet heard from our malpractice carrier if that's even covered under our malpractice coverage. So that's a bounty.
It's a bounty.
Councilwoman Winter.
Thank you very much. Um, you said that you didn't know how many women, uh, come to the hospital after an abortion in a clinic? Is it countless or?
Not, not many.
Not many? A handful?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a pretty rare thing to see. Um, uh, you know, ER doctors oftentimes can take care of that kind of stuff.
Sure.
Not even having to call us. Um, so there, it may be far more than what Mike and I deal with because we deal with the ones when, you know, things have gotten really, really bad. Um, how many times have I seen that in the last year? Once, maybe? Yeah, I mean, would you guys? Once, I mean, once, once a year, maybe I'll have a, one that, a patient that had a, a medical abortion that was administered via um, another, you know, Planned Parenthood or by mail that comes in incomplete and bleeding and
Oh, by mail with the, um, abortion pill?
Yeah, yeah, so
Because it was too far along or
Well, and usually it's just bad luck, you know, appropriately treated.
Yeah, I think it's like four percent or something that take the, the pill through the mills.
So, I mean, uh, I, I would say that, you know, that woman comes to the hospital every once in a while. It has to have a DNC, which is the same thing we do for a woman that's having a spontaneous miscarriage that's bleeding and it just won't pass. That's an incomplete abortion.
Sure.
Um, so the, it's an incomplete abortion, whether it was spontaneous or whether it was induced.
Sure.
And it's the same treatment, and we treat it the same way.
Sure. Uh, I think it is important for everybody to know that there are no regulations for abortion clinics in Colorado. Um, a lot of these places, abortion clinics are using midwives that they're training, RNs. Um, and, you know, when it comes to, uh, maybe this particular abortionist, um, we're, you know, some people say we don't want women to go to the back alley, but you should know, a lot of these modern day abortion clinics are the back alley, especially this one. But, um, but, but, you know, we can always talk more and adjust the, uh, ordinance appropriately. Um, I think another thing that everybody seems to be missing, and I know this isn't, uh, your end of it, but, um, where this clinic is located is in a beautiful residential area. And it's basically taking all of those homes in the surrounding area and making their homes worth zero. I mean, nobody wants to live next door to an abortion clinic. And, um, because of all the shenanigans that go on, the protesting, that kind of thing. Um, and with things that have happened to abortion clinics, it could be dangerous as well to live next door. So I don't think that's anything that we've really talked about either. I think we were all kind of shocked that it made it through planning and zoning. And, um, you know, I feel sorry for those folks. A lot of those folks, that's the only thing they have to, to hand over to their children um, when they die, and it's gonna be worth nothing. Um, and it's probably difficult to rent that, um, homes around that area as well. So that's, that's another thing that well, I, I'm, I'm bringing this up. Or I should say, like you say, I have the floor. So anyway, it's just something for the audience to realize that that's another underlying issue.
I don't have a medical opinion about their home value.
Counselor.
Said it wasn't directed at you, so.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank both of you for being here. Um, you know, there, there is no other city, uh, in Colorado that has this ordinance. And when you look at the ordinance, uh, you're talking, uh, about an ordinance that was really authored in Texas. And as you know, Texas has outlawed the ability to get an abortion, uh, with many, many more penalties, uh, uh, included in it. So, um, I'm sorry that you, you know, that you have to go through this because it's almost like you're being cross-examined. And that's not, that's not the intent of, uh, not my intent. Uh, you know, we want really valid information, information that can be really verified, both, both legal and medical. And, uh, I, I think that you gave us, uh, some really valuable information tonight that I think uh, both sides probably were not aware of. The ordinance also doesn't do one thing. It does not eliminate, um, you know, it does not eliminate, uh, you know, the, the state law that really is given the right to women, uh, to make their own choice about this. And so there is a big contradiction as to whether we should even be involved as a city. Uh, the law clearly states the municipality in a city like Pueblo cannot abridge, amend, or change this law in any way. So, um, you know, I, I, you know, I tell you that because, uh, you know, it's, uh, it, to me, it's a high bar, uh, and, uh, I, I'd hate to see our medical facilities in Pueblo, uh, you know, be handicapped like you, you are without, um, you know, without this information. I think most people didn't know this. So I really appreciate you being here.
Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a couple of quick questions, and also thank you too for taking time out of your um, professional or personal lives. Thank you all, uh, for being here. Um, how are medical license, licenses currently issued in Colorado and who's the licensing authority?
The, uh, state has the Colorado Department of Regulatory Agencies, so we're in a license under DORA.
Okay, that's all.
And I, more background, med school residency, pasture boards, have a malpractice, show evidence of malpractice insurance coverage and, and then apply to DORA, background check. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
All right, seeing no other questions. I, I really appreciate your guys' time and, and all, everyone from Parkview from being here tonight. So thank you. Um, that's like the longest applause I've ever heard from Park, so Parkview, that's good for you guys. Um, all right, so it sounds like, just to recap from this evening, it sounds like we're going to then have a work session on Monday for the legalities for both sides prior to the vote on Monday, uh, for the work session. And, um, it also probably, I, just as, as I'm like mentally planning it out, I, that will probably be the only work session topic. Um, so we're just gonna decide that now. Um, that that's gonna be the only, the only work session topic on Monday um, for the league, for the legal pieces. Um, at that work session, I also, uh, expect respect. So you can plan on that as well. Um, it, otherwise, it's six thirty-three PM and I conclude this work session.